Education September 2024 Work Session. Please stand as we observe a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Dr. Butler.
First and foremost, I want to take a moment to welcome and recognize our newly elected Board members, Ann Templeton, who's representing District Two, Patricia Fontenot Ridley, did I get that correct?
Yes.
Representing District Three, and Lauren Morgan, who's representing District Five. And although Travis Wright, who represents District Eight, was appointed by County Commission to fulfill the remainder of Mr. McMillan's term following his passing, he is also beginning his four-year term, so welcome again, Mr. Wright. Welcome to each of you. I know I speak for the remaining Board members when I say we look forward to serving alongside you and collaborating with you on things affecting our Knox County students, families, staff, and community. Do we have any requested changes to the agenda?
Motion by Mr. Triplett, second by Ms. Christie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Ryswick, do you have a report for us?
I do. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks for the chance to give a few updates. I'd also like to congratulate all the new Board members. I won't repeat all your names again, but since Ms. Henderson just did, but it was great to be able to see you all at the swearing-in ceremony today. It was really great, too. Just really excited as a superintendent that we have you guys here and onboard. We've made a lot of great progress in the last couple of years, and I think this is going to continue. I've got to know you guys through some different things, and I think we're really set up to do some great things. So thank you for being willing to serve the students in Knox County. As you know, we've also been undergoing a five-year strategic plan. We've been operating, excuse me, under a strategic, a five-year strategic plan that ends this year, which means that we'll begin mapping out our plan for the next five years. Later this month, you all as a Board of Ed will be kicking off the development of a five-year strategic plan process by sharing a survey with families, staff, and community members. In order to do this effectively, we need to, we need input from our stakeholders, and this is one survey that will be a tool to get that feedback. Families and staff should be on the lookout for a parent square notification. I think most of you guys know who or knew what parent square is, just making sure. Most of you are tied either have been on staff or have kids, so that'll go on out. That'll come out later, where the community members will be able to find information on our website as well for that. We do hope the stakeholders will consider filling out the survey and help shape the planning process for the future. In addition, I want to remind everyone that our annual coupon book campaign will launch this Thursday, September the 12th. The coupon book is our largest fundraiser, as you may know. It plays a critical role in supporting school initiatives, and I'm grateful for the merchants, the families, and educators, and students who we're participating this year. To learn more about the coupon fundraiser, you can go to the website at knoxschools.org backslash coupon book. We were reminded with the recent dine-out just how much our community really does support and willing to pay for our schools and understands the value of that. This is another way the community can be involved. I'm also pleased to announce that the KCS, a KCS teacher has received a prestigious recognition. Ms. Natalie Elkins is a performing arts teacher at Holston Middle School, and last month she was honored as the East Tennessee Grand Division Teacher of the Year. Ms. Elkins is an aspiring educator and a great representative of Knox County schools. I look forward to honoring her this Thursday at our board meeting. Again, you all saw her Holston Show Choir at your swearing-in ceremony today. She's phenomenal, and I'm sure if you don't know where you'll get to, I was in her classroom two weeks ago, just has a love for the kids and definitely a love for the community, has even done community theater to bring community in as well to work with Holston. So she's an amazing person, so glad she'll be with us Thursday night. Finally, I'm excited to share that I'm recommending the district again cover the full cost of increase to employ health insurance premiums for staff members enrolled in our plan. I'm proud to say that for the last three years with the support of the Board, KCS on an average has paid 75% of the total insurance costs for employees, and I believe this highlights our commitment to recruiting and retaining high-quality teachers and team members. We recently, I see my friend Paula in the front row, we recently met with the Peca team as well, and unanimously approved the support of this recommendation. I hope the Board will consider approving this item on Thursday. That's really important. It was important for us, too. You all did a great job with a raise this year for our staff, and this is just another way for them to fill the full amount of that raise. So hopefully that will work for you guys. And Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Awesome. Thank you, Dr. Ryswick. Dr. Brown, I think you have a report for us on special education. Thank you for putting that together. Thank you for putting that together. I know I asked for that a few months ago, and I know you're going to do this quarterly, so I appreciate that.
Absolutely. I'm glad to do, and actually, I plan to start today, for those who aren't aware, just to thank you all. I do appreciate the opportunity to come and share with the board. For those of you who don't know, Ms. Henderson asked back in July that I give some updates over the summer. I think the progress sometimes slows on things instead of receiving a lot of questions, so I'm glad to do that. So, tonight, just want to share with you what's being done in our special education department as we seek to create a culture of continuous improvement. As you know, or you may know, we're in the middle of year two of our student success deep dive, and this year our primary focus is really going to be on our special ed analysis, and then the end product of that will be creating a three- to five-year strategic plan to meet the needs of our students, our families, our staff, and our district. Oh, he told me to turn the remote on. There we go. All right, so as I thought about sharing, really wanted to kind of provide some consistency in the message we give to you each time, so we're going to really focus on three areas today. The first is staff development, what we're doing to continue to build our staff and their knowledge and competence in the areas of special education, how we're continuing to engage our stakeholders, and then obviously this being our year of developing that strategic plan, want to share with you that process as we move through that. So, our follow-up date for staff development, obviously a lot was done over the summer. The summer, we trained administrators on managing preschool programs in their schools and just the basic special ed procedures for that. We also held follow-up training. For those of you who don't know, I think you should have a copy of the KCS Way for Special Education. That was a handbook that was developed last year to really provide some consistency for the family experience in IEPs in our schools, so obviously you probably don't have time to thumb through that right now, but for the new board members, I want to make sure you all have that. We trained everyone in February on that process. Dr. Loy and her team shared that at a principal's meeting. We followed up this summer with all of our new special ed, I'm sorry, all of our new administrators, so we trained 61 new principals and assistant principals on the KCS Way for Special Education and how to have some consistency in those IEP meetings. We also, you all may remember, you approved an item in June for the University of North Carolina to come in and do a training for autism. North Carolina, the University of North Carolina is one of the experts in educating students with autism, and so they came in and worked with 50 different teachers from across our county at the Teach Autism Program, and also followed up by training our autism coaches in the district for in-depth training on how to coach teachers around working with students with autism. One other thing I just wanted to kind of highlight because I just wanted to shout out my department and kind of what they're doing. This summer, we had a couple of our, actually our special ed director and one of our supervisors who were highlighted and interviewed in an article, a publication by LRP as a media corporation, who are highlighted probably as the, as a source of best practice in legal compliance in the nation. They hand, they host an annual conference on legal issues in special education. They actually wrote an article about the transition from pre-K to kindergarten and the transition using those BIPs to make sure that's Behavior Intervention Plan, for those of you without your cheat sheets. But make sure those students have Behavior Intervention Plans that help them in that transition from pre-K to kindergarten, so they actually highlighted and interviewed Dr. Loy and Shelley Everly, who oversees our pre-K program. So, that was pretty exciting, and just kind of wanted to shout them out for that work that they did. All right? As far as stakeholder engagement, as you all know, following the Task Force recommendations, we asked those Task Force members, gave them the opportunity to stay on. Some of those numbers have dwindled, and we were down to two people. As I looked to get some more input, I thought it was a great opportunity to make sure we had representation from all five regions in our district, and so two of our members stayed on, and I reached out to regional directors and others in the community to recommend parents with students with disabilities who might want to be advocates for their region and stand up and be the voice for students and for families. And so, we've added three new members to the special ed council, so we now have five total members that I'll be working with throughout the year and just keeping them in the loop and getting feedback on the process as we work through building the strategic plan and doing our special ed analysis this year. We also hired a facilitator this year to help us in the child find area, so when students transition from birth to three years old, they receive really medical support through TEIS, that's Tennessee Early Intervention Services, and then at age three, they roll into IDEA and special ed services within the school. And so, that's a transition for parents, and this is really their first interaction with school-level supports, so we have hired a facilitator specifically to work with those families to make sure that their first experience is a good one, and they're well-educated, and they know how to advocate for themselves and their child, and they know what their rights are, and so really wanted somebody to help enhance that experience and make that transition into public schools a seamless one. We expanded our parent newsletter, so that goes out on a monthly basis, but our special ed liaison in the odd bud's office works with our special ed department, and it's really a great resource with a lot of tools and information for our families. We also, as part of what we do to follow up with our students post-graduate, our department is currently making about 500 phone calls to parents of recent graduates, just following up to see how things are going, if they've transitioned well into adulthood, what things might we have done better to help them in that transition, maybe what things we did well, but constantly looking to see how we can improve in those areas. And then our special ed director and our special ed liaison also attended the East Tennessee Family Engagement Fair, which was held in Oak Ridge by a national organization called ARC. We have an East Tennessee chapter that are, that we work with quite a bit. It's basically, it's a, it's another opportunity for families to learn how to get engaged, so we go and make sure that, you know, we have representation so that they feel like they can engage with us as a school system. On the staff side of things, I mentioned a minute ago some of the principal trainings that we have done. We are also offering on an as-needed basis to schools when they have certain topics that they want to train their staffs on. We're offering specific trainings in those areas, and we will be participating in our district learning days we had at the beginning of school and then upcoming in November. Again, training general education teachers on special education and what that looks like to support students with disabilities in their classroom. So, from the strategic planning side of things, our goal this year at the end of our special ed analysis is to develop a three- to five-year strategic plan, and really the reasons why, we want to improve achievement for students with disabilities across the district. We want to move more students into the general education setting, and we just want to improve special education support so that we can keep students in their home schools. I do want to share some good information. We ran, and these are exciting numbers, we ran our LRE, so LRE is Least Restrictive Environment, and that is when a student with a disability is placed. In this case, we look at how much time they spend in the general ed classroom versus how much time they spend in a self-contained or a pull-out setting, and so the goal and what we're working toward is 80% of those students spending 80% of their time in the general ed classroom. So far, right now, we just ran the numbers. Our goal for this year, set for us by the State Department, is 77.2%. Currently, our district is sitting at 79.2. So, we at this moment have exceeded our goal set by the state for this year. Our goal two years out in 2027 is actually 80%. Currently, Regions One through Four are all over 80%. Region Five is at 77.2, which again, meets this year's goal, so we're continuing to work with schools, and our facilitators and supervisors are going out to make sure we're getting students in the regular ed environment as much as possible. All right, so as far as the strategic plan goes, if you all recall, last month you approved the contract with PCG, which is the Public Consulting Group, and really PCG is, it was a, is an organization founded in 86. They're headquartered in Boston, Massachusetts. They work primarily with the public sector in areas like health, education, and human services to make measurable improvements to their performance and processes within a district. So, for us, PCG is going to be doing our comprehensive special ed review of all of our services. They understand that our goal is to determine the strengths and areas of improvement specific to the current special ed system design, structural supports, and continuum of services available for students with disabilities in Knox County, and then also how those are aligned with our strategic plan. So, for us, PCG is going to look at six main areas. They're going to look at learning environment and specialized services. They're going to look at high expectations. They're going to look at leadership, and I thought that was really appropriate in our year of the principals, we're really trying to support our principals. Leadership was, I was glad to see that was an area they look at. They're going to, they're going to see how well we engage with our families and community. They're going to look at human capital. Are we staffed appropriately? Do we have the right student-teacher ratios? And then also, they're going to look at our systems and structures. So, really excited to see what's going to come out of the results as we continue to work with PCG. So, here's, just wanted to share with you kind of a timeline, so you can be looking ahead at what we're looking at. So, in September, we're going to start off with some project kickoffs. We're in conversation with them right now what that looks like, but we're going to, you know, kick off and have probably meetings with the special ed council and myself. We're looking at potentially making a recording so that we can post that to the website and make sure that all parents have access to the information. Then in October and December, they're really in that data collection phase, so they're going to start with stakeholder engagement. They're going to send out surveys. We're going to hold, host some focus groups. They're going to do school visits. I've asked them to, you know, we're going to spread that out and do that in every region, and really just, they're going to take a top-to-bottom look at the services and supports for all of our students with disabilities. Also, since we did a lot of this work last year with getting some parent engagement and feedback, we have already provided them the deep dive feedback we did last year with the Ackerman Report, also given them the Task Force recommendations that were shared last year, also the focus groups, the surveys that we did, all that, all the data that we had already collected, I went ahead and shared that with them so they could use that as some baseline information to get started. All right, so the next steps, once they get that data, is they will actually do their analysis and present us with key findings. So, once they do that, there'll be a presentation to the board. I'm guessing, you know, that'll fall somewhere in that January to March timeframe, and then the final step of what they will do for us is to work with us to develop that three-to-five year strategic plan. So, we anticipate that happening somewhere in the April to May timeframe where, you know, they will meet with myself, the special ed council, the schools, our special ed department, and really take the key findings that they found and build out a strategic plan to drive our special ed department for the next three to five years. And then obviously, we're going to share that with you guys and post the website and share with the community. And then, so what you can expect next are our next steps. As far as the staff development, again, we're going to continue to train principals. We've got sessions at our monthly principals' meetings where we're sharing with those. The special ed department is also offering a series of after-school sessions that principals can come to, so they're offering two of those a month, which go out in our professional development offerings. Again, I'm meeting with the special ed, and I think my assistant actually, as of this afternoon, is setting up those monthly meetings, and so we will continue to meet and keep them abreast of things that are going on, obviously continuing to engage people in the strategic planning process with those surveys and focus groups, and then obviously the kickoff that we've got coming up for strategic planning, and then the school visits will follow that. So, that's where we are. So, everybody got any questions?
Ms. Spike?
Thank you, and thank you so much for jumping into this work. I know you haven't been in this for a whole year yet, and I really, really appreciate it. I want to roll back to our policy review that was just before you took this position, and something that I had brought up were gifted students and twice-exceptional students, and really making sure that they are included in this.
Yes.
I think that that's been something that has been a struggle for families to access an IEP, and so I really hope that that will also be a part of this. So, my questions are, well, I guess that was just a statement, so sorry, and I hope.
But to answer, the answer is yes. We will be looking at all students with exceptionalities, you know, from the lowest functioning to our highest functioning students.
Do you think that you'll recommend a policy that might include verbiage that talks about gifted and twice-exceptional students in being inclusive within special education?
I don't know. Again, a lot of it will depend on the recommendations that come from the findings. As it's, it is an inclusion of IDEA, so I don't know that we would necessarily need a policy, but obviously, you know, we're open to whatever, whatever we need to do to make sure we're providing for all students.
Yeah. There are, at that policy review, I had brought some from larger, not larger, but similar school districts from across the United States that are really being progressive about including those students, and so, and they did have specific policies that did list it. I would really love to see something like that in writing, I think would be great.
Okay.
And then also within this, and I know that you're kind of just darting into some of this work and the task force and whatnot, but going back to students that might be diagnosed with autism or beyond the spectrum, often times, and I think that's where some of our families also struggle, if they don't look disabled or autistic, it can be hard to identify them, and I'm curious how you might, how your team might be bridging that gap.
Yeah, so that's a good question. I think one great tool, and I hope, you know, we've, we've launched kind of a revamped, kind of a beta test of the website in the spring, and really the purpose of that was to help parents navigate the process, and so I really hope that that's one way that they can continue to access if they have questions or they have concerns, and, I mean, obviously, the best way is always to reach out to the school, and if, if they don't get the answers, they can always, you know, call the special ed department downtown and make sure. And I think, again, we can continue to share resources in our newsletters and make sure that parents are aware of the services that are available and ways they can support their child at school.
Do you think that some of the trainings that are available for our staff will include information that is kind of reaching out in that way of talking about that, because I do think some people looks and, you know, it's hard to identify things and stuff like that, and I know I've heard from a lot of parents that struggle to get their child recommended, and they, they are not, a lot of times professional, the parents are not the professionals that are psychologists and teachers that know what to ask or know where to go.
Right.
Even though they might be given like a piece of paper that says their rights, that's just a bunch of words, you know?
Sure.
So, I'm curious how that would work.
Yeah, and I, and I guess that it depends on what stage we're at as far as identifying a student. Obviously, in the IEP meeting when we start those, hopefully the KCS Way makes it a little more comfortable that, you know, we're really taught, trying to give a personal focus to those meetings and making sure that, you know, parents feel like they're a part of the team and they have their questions answered and they're getting the support they need. I also know, you know, within our schools, that, you know, administrators, that teachers, if they have concerns, obviously they can, you know, make those kind of referrals and questions and make sure that, you know, obviously in the end, we want to provide all students with the supports they need to be successful. So, again, we will continue to try to get the word out, whether that's through newsletters and the website and sharing information with parents as, as we, you know, as we're made aware of those things, or as we notice them and maybe can offer supports to families.
And my last question, the, actually, just kidding, I have two. The facilitator for the transition, I think that's really great because I do think the TEIS and Child Find and Knox County Schools can be very different.
Yeah.
Will that facilitator, or will there be anyone that will also be helping families transition from either nothing or a 504 to an IEP? Is that a part of this person's work, or is this just Child Find?
This is strictly for Child Find in our pre-K classrooms, but I do think that that's kind of the role of the case manager in the building. When you, when you bring a student in and transition from a 504 to a, an IEP, then their role is to help the parents navigate that process, and, you know, the 504 meeting and process does look different from IDEA and the development of an IEP, but again, that's hopefully through the KCS Way and us bringing a more family-friendly environment to the IEP meetings, hopefully we can help them navigate that process a little easier.
Okay. And my last question, I promise. The newsletters that, the special education newsletters, do you guys ever, or do you plan to ask, maybe send out a survey to the people that that newsletter goes to to ask kind of engage how helpful that is, and maybe what kind of content they would want to hear from, or what they need help with?
I don't know that we have done that. Again, I, being new to this, I don't have a lot of history with the newsletters, but I do know they're trying to do a better job and reach more people, and we're looking at the numbers of what the readership is and how much engagement we get on those. It's, it's an online through a platform called Smore, so I know that they get the data and statistics back on, on how much engagement there is, but no, that's, that's definitely something we could look at. But, no, that's, that's definitely something we could look at, and, because obviously, we don't want to just be giving out information if it's not helpful.
Right, yeah. I think that's something I would like to see.
No, I'll, I'll make sure to, I'll make note of that when I sit down, and we'll, we'll look into that.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome, thanks Ms. Pike. Reverend Butler?
Yes, thank you, and thank you for your presentation, particularly, glad to see that all the regions are meeting. I think the acronym was the LRE.
Yes, sir.
Least Restricted Environment.
Least Restrictive Environment, that's correct.
I was glad when you said that, I knew what that meant. I was kind of proud of myself. But I did have a question about what, what the factors could possibly be, or could be considered for the region four being over, region one through four being over eighty percent, and region five being at seventy, seventy-two percent. I see that they met the goal, but why, what could that be?
So, everybody's met the goal for this year. So, the goal for this year was seventy-seven point two, and region five is seventy-seven point two-two. We, you know, we just went one, one decimal there, but we've exceeded it. It's, a lot of it has to do with scheduling, and, and what our, our facilitators and supervisors do is they go out and work with principals to, to work on their scheduling, to make sure there are opportunities. A lot of times, that's what it is, there's conflicts with what students need and what they're able to take, especially in the middle and high schools, that's where it becomes the most difficult. So, continuing to work with those high schools on their scheduling and making sure that their availability is there for students to get into the general ed setting and support them in that setting versus having them in a pull-out type setting.
Yeah, thank you, because one of my questions was, what was the, were there grade-related issues, and I see that.
Yes.
The other thing is, do you all work with data beyond the regions down to the schools to see which schools?
Yes, absolutely. We actually, when we pull that data, it's done through T and Pulse, which houses all the IEP information, and we pull it student by student, so we cannot just see individually, you know, I gave you all the big picture, which was the regions, but we do dial it down to individual schools to see where they are with their LRE numbers, and then that helps guide us to where we need to go and provide support. And then within that, we also can then drill down to even the individual student to see which student is not included eighty percent of the time, to see if individually, we can make small tweaks in their schedule to get them to spend eighty percent of their time in the general ed setting.
Super. My last question may not be just isolated with special needs or special education, but when we first had the region program, I think regions one through four was under one assistant superintendent, and five was with another. I understand they are together now?
That's...
I'll take that one.
Okay.
Thank you Reverend Butler. This is good, I'll say publicly to you. This was a conversation that we had when you said, "Well, why is five being pulled out separate?" And I gave you all the reasons why.
Right.
You were right. It is now part of the academic team.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you say it.
No, no, you're good.
What'd you say?
Say it again louder.
Say that again.
So, it was good, a good lesson learned for us over the last two years. I think what we were starting to see happen was sometimes creating, it, it's good because I think it brought the spotlight to those schools. The flip side is, you could start creating different structures and different expectations. And I think, you know, Mr. Murphy and, and, Dr. Murphy, excuse me, and Ms. Reynolds, they do a great job of having that, but we were starting to see a little bit of isolation from some of the changing expectations in some of the subject areas. And I think our principals expressed that too. So, instead of continuing down that road and being stubborn, we made the change this year, so I think it's going to help us.
Thank you. That's my last one.
Okay, thank you Reverend Butler.
Well, I'm right.
It's a good note to end on, right? I'm right. Ms. Triplett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate the work you're doing. I, I would be interested in hearing or seeing what you get out of the postgraduate phone calls.
Okay.
I know it's a lagging indicator, but at the same time, just knowing where we're at and where we've been and how we're doing, and obviously, that can speak to what we're going to do different, you know, in the grades previous. And then the follow-up, are you, will you send this to us, this presentation to us, so we'll have a...
I think Ms. Coney will share that with you all.
Perfect, very good, thank you.
Yeah.
And the only other thing I did have to add, Mr. Mosman sent me staffing numbers, you know, that's been a, as everybody's bragging on, on staffing and, and on the, on the great work that the talent acquisition team has done, I am really excited to share that as of this morning, we only have seven special ed vacancies district-wide. This time last year, we had thirty-three. We only have fourteen educational assistant vacancies. Last year, we were sitting at forty-nine.
Oh, wow.
So, you all know the, the contract you approved with ESS, the staffing solutions company, they have filled fifty-one of those positions, but in addition to that, we had other vacancies, and, and our talent acquisition team has also filled an additional twenty-eight. So, we're in a really good place, and that allows us to provide the services our students need. So, that's a big deal. So, I just wanted to share that and give a shout out also to the talent acquisition team, because they've done a great work.
Yeah, thank you. I was wondering that, so I'm glad that you brought that up. Ms. Templeton?
Coming back. I had a question actually about the schools, and I would love to see that data as it travels down to the schools as a whole, but I had a question about the LRE and the eighty percent, which is fantastic, but does that come with supports for these teachers? What does that look like in the classroom as a whole for the teachers as, as special needs kids are brought in and included in the conversation, which is wonderful, but what kind of supports are also included for the teachers?
So, a lot of it depends on the student and what their needs are. There, sometimes we have assistants that go into classrooms and support individual students or small groups. Sometimes that looks like a teacher going in and co-teaching in the regular education setting. Sometimes, depending on the level of disability, sometimes it's just up to the general education teacher to make the changes and modifications that that student needs to, to meet their needs in the regular ed setting.
Okay. And those are, those are full? We filled those positions?
Which ones?
So, the teachers, the teachers have the supports that they need to maintain this eighty percent?
Outside of the seven...
That's what you're saying, outside of the seven.
Yeah, but, yeah. Outside of the seven teachers and the fourteen assistants, yes, we, we're...
It's a sustained program, great.
Pretty, pretty well-staffed.
Thank you.
Yep.
My daughter's in a co-taught class, and it's been great for her, so...
It benefits everyone.
Yeah.
And I, I mean, I've told stories hundreds of times, my, both of my boys went to my schools and were in inclusion settings and...
Yeah.
...made lifelong friends, and it's mutually beneficial. You know, it, it, it's good for everybody, so...
It is.
We are, we're all very much pro-inclusion, and we'll continue to do everything we can to include as many students as much as possible in the general ed setting.
Yeah, that's good to hear, I appreciate that. Are there any other questions? Well, I appreciate this. I know, I mean, we've talked about it before, I know it's a lot of work, but it's important work, because, you know, every year of a child's life is a huge chunk of their education in their life, so I appreciate you diving into this, and I look forward to, you know, seeing the data, kind of digging through that, and, you know, kind of getting into the meat potatoes of the strategic plan, so I'm excited about the work that we have. It's gonna be hard work, but...
Yeah, it's exciting.
Good work, good work, so, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much. Hey, Ms. Triplett, do you have a legislative update for us?
Thank you, Madam Chair. All of you know, we did not, or most of you know, I guess, we didn't have our policy review meeting on August sixteenth, we had that scheduled, and another meeting ran a little long, and so we were unable to have that. So, what you have on the agenda for, for us to vote on Thursday is a number of policy changes related to recent legislation, and so Mr. Dupler went through, and the goal of that meeting was to go through all those changes, discuss them, and then, then we'd have a vote on Thursday. So, those are on our work session for today to discuss, and then we'll vote on them on Thursday. Mr. Dupler, as we go through them, if you have questions, can speak to what is very specifically, you know, new wording from a law, or, you know, from a new legislative change, and then, and then to any other, any other discussion. But most of what we find on our policies for this meeting to discuss and Thursday to vote are, are recent legislation updates, so...
No questions? Oh. Ms. Christie, do you have a strategic plan update?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And the Strategic Plan Committee, which consists of Dr. Reverend Butler, I never know whether to say Reverend or doctor, I'm sorry. I try to alternate. Ms. Henderson and myself met on Monday, August twenty-sixth at ten a.m. with Representatives of Milan, Chicago, to finalize stakeholder engagement surveys that will be distributed to students, families, staff, community members, and representatives. As we finalized the surveys, and as we have indicated over the past several months, the focus of the surveys will be on the four district priorities, with the fifth area of focus around the student and family experience. The surveys will be distributed through our current KCS Parent Square platform, and will also be made available in paper format at every school and in multiple languages with translation assistance offered to all who need it. Also, last, on August eighth, the Board approved the contract with Accenture LLP for strategic planning services. The Strategic Plan Committee is looking forward to working with their representatives on the formation of our new five-year strategic plan using the feedback garnered from the stakeholder engagement surveys. Milan, Chicago will be prepared to share the survey data and results with us on October twenty-fourth or twenty-fifth at the annual workshop. We will continue to keep the Board informed as the process moves forward and seek Board approval as needed along the way. We look forward to completing our work as a committee, as a proposed new strategic plan is offered for Board approval during the spring of 2025.
Awesome, thank you. All right, well, if no one has any questions, or we will move forward to our regular session agenda. And I just want to say, Board members, new Board members, if for some reason you have questions, I'm going too fast for you guys, just let me know. I know this can be a lot for your first meeting, so please just chime in if I can help you in any way. So, with that, we'll move into this agenda. So, six C items and contracts. Does anyone have a question on items one or two? Yes, Ms. Pike?
I just, this is for number two.
Okay.
The approved enterprise subscription agreement with Artists Limited.
Artists?
Artlist, that's the best way I can say it.
Artlist?
I, I had a ton of questions about this, and Ms. Lotner was so gracious to work so hard, and her team worked so hard over the weekend, to get me all of the answers to really feel good about voting on this, and I wonder if you wouldn't mind to kind of give maybe a summation of the direction and questions we went? Thanks.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Ms. Pike, members of the Board. So, this contract represents kind of a continuation of work that we have been doing with a company motion array for some time now, a handful of years, and really just reflecting the scale of our work as our video production as an organization has increased to match the size of our district, and the fact that we're technologizing as a society and video communication is being used more often. We're using it more often to communicate with families, to provide instructional content to our families. We do need to increase the scale of our contract as well with this organization, and so we'll be shifting from a more individual-level contract to what they call an enterprise-scale contract for an organization of our size. This really just provides access to a suite of video assets that are created by a series, a network of artists, it's something that artists contribute into. That helps us in the form of providing readily accessible audio files for, you know, all the fun vocalization and music that you hear in the background of videos, but really also helps us kind of enhance and create efficiencies in the video production process. It comes with a series of templates, and also, you know, some graphics and some animations as well that are ready-made, that help us produce more quickly than we would be able to producing all of this content individually with the one videographer that we have on staff.
Awesome.
Ms. Pike, does that cover it? Okay, thanks.
Ms. Fontenot Ridley?
Is this a company that we already have a contract with?
Thank you. So, we do not currently have a contract because our usage has been limited over the years. We have just been paying through an invoice. This scale of work does require a contract, which is why it's coming to the Board for approval.
Is it the same company?
It is the same company, yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, moving on, items three or four? Five or six? Seven or eight? Yes, Ms. Pike?
I do have a quick question.
Yeah.
About junior achievement. So, for this contract, this would be district-wide allowing any of our schools to be able to access this? This is not limited to just like one or five schools?
That's understanding, but Dr. Wilson?
Yes, and, and it's actually very close to the contract we already had with, with junior achievement that we've brought back. There's an additional attachment to this contract that they have asked us to include that outlines the requirement for the training for teachers. There's some, like, lesson and pre-work that goes with bringing students to the biz town, and then there's some follow-up activity as well, and so it's part of that, so we really just kind of adds, adds a piece to the contract that we already had with them.
Okay. Kind of a follow-up question for that. With the teachers having to do that work, for the schools and teachers that may already have so much work, are there any supports that we're giving them in order to complete this so that they can take their students?
I believe the training happens in the summer prior to, to them taking the students on the trip, and kind of, kind of back to your original question, like, we, we really have tried to work with junior achievement to expand. I think County Commission, actually, they worked with them last year to make it a no-cost effort for any student that wanted to go, and so, it is, it is, as we think about kind of what does career empowerment look like at the elementary grades level, and kind of how we begin to lean into that space, it's probably one of the key feature-type trips that really does that well. And so, they've been a very willing partner, and, and again, this training component really just ensures that kids are getting that kind of unified experience when they go.
That sounds great. My daughter, when she was in fifth grade, she went, and I was a chaperone, and it was really fun to watch, and also see, you know, some kids that chose to be a CEO kind of break down understanding that they had to pay bills. So, that was, it was really interesting, and I think that it is really great for kids to be able to participate.
I, I think my daughter got to manage the Chick-fil-A, and it was kind of the highlight of her first, like, ten years of school, or something like that, yeah.
Thank you.
That's awesome. Love this town. All right, nine or ten? Eleven or twelve? Thirteen or fourteen? I love all the musicals that are coming up, I'm excited about those. Sixteen or seventeen? Eighteen or nineteen? All right, moving on then to board policies. A or B? Yes, Ms. Pike?
I have a question. The, I believe it's C two-twenty?
Oh, yeah, so the first one?
Yeah, the first one. And it kind of looks like that one may be in conjunction with the few new ones that are, are the, what, C two-twenty-one and C two-twenty-two. Is there someone here that might be able to speak to those, and are they connected, and how, what is the plan?
Yeah, I think so, Mr. Dupler, I think you can speak to that, right? And I think the way you bundled them so that they kind of do go, like, the new ones go together versus kind of just the, the changes.
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Ms. Pike. So, I can start, after that, you know, somebody may, with the school system, may, may, may need to talk about...
Like specifics, yeah.
Yeah, how it's going to be implemented, but, but the answer to your question is yes. A new law called for all three of these policies, so, I mean, the modification to the AED policy, the cardiac emergency response plan, and the athletics emergency action plan. Those, those latter two were new policies, but they were taken straight out of the language in the new legislation. And the, the AED policy, probably the best way to describe that is that prior to this new law, each school needed to have one AED available on campus, but with this new law, you're likely looking at more than one AED on campus, because you'll have to have one basically for sports, perhaps even multiple ones for sports, depending on the situation, and then one at the school.
And some of this verbiage on C two-twenty kind of, I think, could be more clear, but are, will all of our staff and teachers be trained on how to use an AED? I know that some and most often have verbal instructions, but I think those aren't always straightforward.
That's a, I mean, that's a good question. Again, I mean, I don't, I don't have the answer to that, someone would have to answer that, but I... But I mean, but I can tell you that, you know, training on the, on the AED is certainly a component of the law. I don't, I don't see where, in there where it says that everyone has to be trained on it, but I mean, but certainly if you're going to use it, there has to be some training.
My worry would be that if this is, if, especially if we have more than one available, if there is a place where it's needed and there isn't a staff member that's been trained on it, how to use it properly, that that could be an issue.
I think, Dr. Brown, can you add some clarification?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, Ms. Pike. If you will look on page two at the top, it outlines that AED users must all be certified in CPR, first aid, and also trained in the AED use. So, no, we do not train everyone. We do make CPR and first aid training available, but in order to be on the cardiac response team and be a part of the administration of that AED, you do have to be CPR and first aid certified.
Are there a certain number of people that we have identified at each school that will definitely be?
Yeah.
What is that percentage?
I don't know that there's a percentage. Each, each school has to have an AED team, and they do drills throughout the year, and each one of them goes to CPR training and first aid on an annual basis to renew that. So we do have a team present at each school.
Do you know about how many people are on those teams?
That would probably vary based on the size of the school. I mean, I can tell you from my experience in our school, we didn't turn anyone away. Obviously, it's a voluntary thing. Nurses usually advertise that and offer the CPR training and set that up with the American Red Cross. But, you know, we don't, we don't have a specified number. It just really depends on the number of teachers and staff who are willing to serve on that.
So if there were a staff member, a teacher, anyone within the school setting that wanted to be trained, then they could be trained, and would that be free of charge? Or covered?
Yes, yes. We paid for that in the school buildings.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Christie?
I just have a question for Mr. Depler. The policy, since we did not have our policy review meeting, are any of these critical to being approved maybe on first reading or?
That's a good question.
I think, thank you, Ms. Christie, and thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me to speak. The, these first few, I would say are probably, you know, more important than, than some of the others, and not that I like to say that, you know, one's more important than the other, but, but if I had to rank them, I mean, certainly, I mean, you have two new policies that the law says that you have to have. Not, not all of these laws say that you have to have it in policy, right? So that's, so that's, that's kind of the distinction that I'm making is that, is that the law that changes this AED policy also calls for the, the cardiac emergency response plan and the athletics emergency action plan, which are required to be carried in policy by the school district. So, so, so I would set those apart.
So these first three, it would be best to do on first reading, to approve on first reading?
And then, and then the only other one, I think, is it the civility code? Is it the? Oh, okay, yeah. Yeah, Ms. Cotten, you reminded me, there's also an AI policy. And again, that, that's one that called, that was called out in the law that said that you had to have, that, that the boards needed to have that as a policy. So, so it would be those four.
Yeah. So A through E or A through D need to be first reading? A through D?
A through D, it looks like.
Would the retention policy be included in that?
I mean, as far as the retention goes, I mean, I would say this. I mean, the board could, could pass all these on first reading if that's what you wanted to do. The board would have to then suspend the policy that calls for a second reading on each and every one of these policies. So, so it's up to the board on how you want to do that. I would also say that, you know, the one, the laws that don't call for it to be specifically in policy, the board and the school system need to follow the law, whether it's in policy or not. So, so as far as third grade retention, you know, and any other of the new laws, I mean, they're in place regardless of whether the policies are changed. Yeah.
Do you have another question?
I have one more question, I'm sorry. On, I'm going back to C220. On lines 19 and 20, and I could be totally wrong, feel free to correct me on this, but where it goes on to say like the AED to be used on an individual who may experience a sudden cardiac arrest event while the individual is on-site of the school youth athletic activity within three minutes, do we, does that need to say, say, on-site of the school and at youth athletic activities? It seems to kind of just say one, or does it state other ones somewhere else that I'm just not seeing?
Coach Brown? Welcome.
Yes. To answer that, we actually just received last week a new AED machine for all, every one of our high schools that has athletic, either competitions or practice off of campus. So within three minutes, all of our schools, we felt very good about being able to do that, but we have certain things that we can't do on campus or certain situations where some of our teams are off. So we purchased and delivered those on Thursday and Friday for each one of those schools. So we feel we've taken care of those situations.
Okay. So will those travel with?
So those are, each athletic director has set up a system within their own school for those to be checked out by people that are going off campus or needing them. Some need them more often than others, and we also are in the process of, there's a few situations, like a golf course is, three minutes is very vague when you could be a mile and a half away on the 17th tee box type of situations. We're working through those situations. But a cross-country course or a park that has some of our baseball or softball that don't have those AEDs or other facilities that do. So we're having those people check those when they're hosting those events at Victor Ash Park or at Three Regis Golf Course, for example.
That, that makes a lot more sense. Thank you for explaining. Would that be only school-sanctioned or sponsored sports or any sport that were somewhat affiliated with?
As far as we are, it is our sanctioned sports, so we don't have those other things that, I guess there are some club activities that would go off campus, but then we would have to make sure that those, the facility that they are participating in those would, would have an AED.
Okay. Thank you.
And that is in competition, not travel. So it wouldn't be, like if our bands are traveling from here to someplace, that stadium that they are in would have that AED and not necessarily in the travel.
Okay. So if they were going to a location that you had confirmed had an AED, then they don't need to check one out?
Correct.
Okay. That makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, items D or E? Ms. Pike?
I'm sorry, just, we didn't get to discuss these. The, my question for the AI policy, are, are there trainings given to the staff? I, I really appreciate that it talks about what you should and definitely shouldn't be putting into any sort of AI tool for the information that you are feeding it. Are all of our staff kind of trained on not putting that information into AI programs?
So I can speak a little bit to the training. So we even had some training that began this summer with some sessions for teachers in advance of the, the policy change and all of that, and had some, a speaker that came in, did multiple sessions on just best practices and things like that. We also have developed, actually, a smaller group who's been kind of working out of our ed tech and with our technology department, have worked on a teacher guidance document around kind of appropriate use and different levels of how students might engage with using those tools, what that would require them in terms of disclosing of information, things like that, back to the teacher. And then it'll be ongoing, I think, as we get more practice in it, in doing that. Some of that happened, you know, specifically with our ELA department in secondary. And you think about writing papers, things like that, that's probably a place where we're going to see initially more use of those types of tools. And so they even did some of that through their initial in-service this year, but that'll be something that'll continue to happen over time. And then two, and I can't speak as deeply to the, the technology side of it, but I know Freddie and the IT team, you know, they, in terms of the platforms and the type of information that gets collected and things like that, they have oversight just like we do for any of our educational software to talk about platforms that are appropriate and collect the right information and keep our kids' information safe.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Moving on. E or F? G or H? I? Yeah. Patricia?
Oh, I thought you were going to say J.
J?
I was just, I was just. Thank you. Letting me speak. I had a question on the wording.
Yeah.
On that policy. Where it says sixth-grade students at some point in middle school will be required to complete, et cetera, et cetera. Does that mean while they're in sixth grade or just at some point while they're in middle school? Because students can move from school to school, and if they get it in sixth grade at one school, they might not get it, or they don't get it in sixth grade, they might not be able to get it in seventh grade.
Yeah. Mr. Depler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Fontenot-Ridley? I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
It is a mouthful. It will take me some time, too.
It is, it is. Sorry. But the, the law specified that, that it has to be taken sometime in middle school. So that was the purpose of the new law, and the legislature felt like they had to specify that because I think people were, were, were asking the question that you're asking, which is if they take it in sixth, do they have to take it in seventh and eighth? And, you know, and the answer is no, just one of those grades in middle school. Any one. Yeah.
Oh, I'll go to you, and then I'll go to you, Ann.
All right, thanks. So just, I just want to follow up on one thing. So that's not unusual that those kinds of requirements, I know it's a graduate, not a graduation requirement, we've seen that in high school before where schools will do it at different grade levels, maybe something like a government class or an economics class, and so they don't always follow the same scale for that or the same pattern. So that's where the counselors have to look at those individual transcripts. So you mentioned a student who might be transit or might move to a different school. They would look and see if they had it or not. By the time that student's in eighth grade, they'd probably be prioritized in that class when they moved to that school if they didn't have it at that point. So our, our counselors will make sure that happens over the, that three-year time, even if they change schools.
You good? Okay. Cool. You're good? Okay. Cool. All right. K or L? Ms. Pike?
I'm so sorry. For L, internet safety. On line 35, that's added, how, how do we plan to obtain parental consent and keep track of what students have parental consent for accessing social media? And is this social, like private social media accounts, or are these social media accounts like for the school or athletics or something like that?
Mr. Depler?
All right, thank you.
And I think, Dr. Wilson, maybe he can clarify to you.
Yes, that'd be great. You know, so, you know, thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Ms. Pike. So the new law talks about just social media accounts. So, you know, and frankly, the, the new law is, is directed mainly at social media companies. So those social media companies will now have to take, you know, safeguards to, to ensure that, that students have parental consent. But the idea behind this policy is if you have a student who needs to use a social media account for class or somehow connected to the school, then, then, then the school system does need to have some type of a, of a way to, to show that the parent has, you know, agreed to that. And then I'll pass that to Dr. Wilson.
Well, I'll just offer an example, and I don't even know if this is still current for what we do in current technical education, but we had a, we have a social media and marketing class and pathway, and, and one of those, you learn to use social media, you, you learn to use some tools that help you manage multiple social media accounts that would be used for like marketing. So as a real-world example, in a class like that, because if you go back to kind of the language in the policy, that if it were required for instruction, that we would have to get that permission, I would, I would say that permission and the collection of that would be tied back to the class, that I am requiring this as part of the class and how we would go about, you know, in this, you would have to have it for that, for instruction to happen, and that that would be at the class level, the need to seek out, I'm going to require students to have this social media access in order to do whatever. So that would be more at the teacher level for, for collecting that if they were going to require it.
If the parents did not give consent to access social media, would that exempt them from that pathway?
Not necessarily. I mean, again, what, like in that particular example, there's an industry certification that goes with that, like being able to do that. I would say they would have to think about what, what alternative assignments and things would look like that, which is again, part of our policy around materials or anything like that. You have that, that chance to ask for alternative assignments, and we'd just have to look at what that would look like for that class in that scenario.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. M or N? O or P? Yes. Ms. Fontenot-Ridley?
Thank you. I was just, and I've been to some of the school board meetings on that side of the fence, and I'm just wondering why we have to take all of those distinctions out? Is it just because it's state law says it like that? Because I'm afraid that not everybody's going to know what is in that law, and so they may not know that, that it's a protected group of people. So do we have to take it out of the language?
Mr. Depler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Fontenot-Ridley? Sorry, I won't make that up again. Yeah. So, yeah, so there is a, is a new law that says, and, you know, it's, the, the current citation is in there, 49-5, 1003, and, and literally it says, I mean, so, so I brought this so I could, you know, read it so that everybody knows, that law was amended by deleting the following in quotes, "on the basis of race, color, creed, disability, sex, national origin, marital status, political or religious beliefs, family, social or cultural background, or sexual orientation," that's all in quotes, "and substituting instead," in quotes, "on any basis." So that's what the, the legislature has directed.
So, excuse me, so is there anything saying that we can't leave the language in there?
I mean, the way, the way I read the law is that, is that the, the substitution is required.
Okay. And I don't mean to be argumentative, I just want to understand. You said before in some of the policies, they are not necessarily law, but I know this is. But it also didn't say, can I, you know, because I mean, I just think that some people don't realize what any type means on any basis. So is that going to depend on how the person who was discriminated against feels? You know, if I say I was discriminated because I have glasses on, you know, if, if some people don't feel like that's being discriminatory, is it going to still weigh the same when it's reported?
As the legislature typically does, they didn't, they didn't give a whole lot of explanation here, but, I mean, what, what the legislature did say in this law is that when it comes to students, okay, so this, this, this same language doesn't apply to employees, so that's why it doesn't appear in the, in the, in the employee policies. But, but when it applies to students, but what the legislature is saying is that, you know, is that there shouldn't be any of that type of conduct with, with students whatsoever. Now, to your point, I think what you're, I think what you're asking, you correct me if I'm wrong, but it's, it's also a matter of proof as well that, you know, just because someone feels discriminated against, I mean, they would still have to show some evidence that they have been discriminated against for whatever reason. So, so that would still play into it.
So it would still be investigated?
Yes.
Ms. Telfolden?
I just want to be clear, so we are legally obligated to make these changes? Is that correct?
Yes, that's, that's my reading of, of the new 49-5-1003.
Okay. Because this is a state law, I'm going to ask a question because this is new to me. Are there any federal fiscal implications that could come down the pike and hinder any kind of funding, educational funding?
any kind of funding, educational funding, from the federal level? If we take this terminology out about marginalized, all these marginalized groups?
So, so what I would say is, thank you for the question, Ms. Templeton. The, I mean, the federal law does take priority, you know, and so what I would say is, is if some of these, if some of this terminology is in the federal law, and it is, you know, even if you're following Tennessee law, you would still need to make sure that you're not discriminating on the basis of any of, of the specific enumerated categories under federal law. So, but, I mean, the way I read, on any basis, I mean, that would still include any category in federal law.
So it's implied? The, the state is saying that it is implied? Or the state legislature is saying that it is an implied protection because of the federal stance?
The way, I, I mean, I don't know about implied, but the way I read it is that the state is saying all of these, all of these categories that I just mentioned are still included on, in, on any basis.
Would there be an opportunity for some sort of compromise in language to say including these groups as opposed to taking the line completely out, but just meaning, opening it up to other potential issues that may arise that would not necessarily fall under these groups, but to include the word "including" would broaden the conversation?
That would be a question for the legislature, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Ms. Pike?
Thank you. I think my question is somewhat in line with the other two board members. And is there, I guess, to be more direct, I would really like to know if we could have discriminated against on any basis, and then either in parentheses have the list and then some sort of all else, or on any basis to include or not limited to race, color, creed, religion, et cetera, disabilities? Is it just asking the legislature, asking for an interpretation?
I think so. I think, I think at this point, the legislature has said that it's a substitution. So it's not, hey, we're going to add on any basis and then all this other language. I mean, the law says substituting instead. So, I mean, you know, that's, and I mean, it's, I'm not, I'm not giving you an opinion one way or another, I'm just telling you that's what the law says.
Yeah. Because I, I think I share concerns, and I know that we had talked about this maybe a little more than six months ago at Policy Review and before, that just leaving it as implied, and I understand the law says replace, but I would like to see something somewhere that would list things directly, because I do think that these happen, and I think depending on where you're at and then leaving it open to interpretation and leaving the burden on the, the person who is being discriminated against is not ideal. So I would like to see something listed somewhere, included or something. Thank you.
Ms. Christie?
Yes. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. DePler, but I believe, if my memory is correct, we talked about this last time, we did discuss the legal references at the end of this policy, which lists the Civil Rights Act of 1964, Title IX, Section 504, along with the state law, right, as, and those would be covered under the other legal references. Am I remembering that correctly?
Yes, yes, you're correct. Those are listed as, as references, yes.
Any more discussion on this policy? All right, moving on. Did anyone have anything on P? I know we had, I had said it, but yes.
Thank you. I reread it, and at first I thought the, where it says executive principal gets, asks, I didn't see the in-writing part, but, so this is designed to take the onus off of the parents when they're enrolling a child in school to give it to the administration to find out if they've been adjudicated delinquent for any of those offenses. And how would that information be used by the, by the administration?
It's on that last page there, under misconduct. Go ahead.
I don't, I don't know if I understand the question, Ms. Fontenot-Ridley, I'm sorry.
It looks, it, it looks like the former version without the inserted, it was up to the parents, legal guardians, or legal custodians to declare whether there was an adjudication. And now it's saying that the executive principal, the administration of the school, is required to ask. So that takes it off the parents and places it on the administration to find out?
No. No, and I understand your question now, sorry. The, so, so, so the parents are still supposed to disclose, but this, this new law places an additional responsibility on the principal, you know, and executive principal being the head principal, to, to actually ask about it. Whereas before, there was no such duty on the principal to ask.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I guess my next question is, how is this information utilized? I mean, is it, according to how the student behaves in the school, is that taken into account when the administration is dealing with a new offense?
Well, there's, 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 there's another law that talks about, you know, if a student has been expelled in one district and is supposed to be going to alternative school in that district, and then the student goes to another district to try to enroll in, in, you know, a zoned school, not a, not alternative, that the, that, that the receiving district doesn't have to take that student. So I, so it's my understanding that that's what this is meant to address.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to Q or R? S or T? Or U? Okay. Moving on then to grants. A or B? Dr. Butler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I apologize. I just wanted to make sure, ask the question for this clarification. So we are looking at A, B, C, and D as approving on first read, and the rest are going to be just first read? Is that correct?
That, yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yes, yes, sir. Thank you for that question to clarify. All right, going back, A or B, just in case y'all haven't looked at those yet. Yes, Ms. Fontenot-Ridley?
Thank you. So is there a more detailed document or anything that says how the ESAR funds are going to be used?
Mr. McGorn?
Madam Chair, Ms. Fontenot-Ridley, yes, there is. So this is the level that the board would need to approve, but yes, there is line-by-line spending of each of the ESAR dollars.
Thank you.
C, moving on to C or D? E or F? G or H? Moving, oh, yes, Ms. Fontenot-Ridley.
Sorry, I have a lot of questions on my first day.
That's okay. Take one.
The Titans Foundation, has that, has that already been donated?
For the Great Flag Football?
Is that money already here?
Uh, Dr. Wilson or Coach Brown, I don't-
I'll let Dr. Brown take that one, Ms. Fontenot-Ridley.
That would be on the approval of your board vote on Thursday. It has not been donated yet.
Okay, so I also noticed that there were already jobs posted for those positions? Is that money coming from somewhere else in the budget for those jobs for coaches?
So we plan to use this grant money to pay for those for this first year, but it is a, a new sport that we're adding for 14 of our high schools, and we're going to move forward with that, whether we get the grant or not. But obviously, this grant will give each of our schools uniforms and equipment packages and at least the money to pay for the coaching stipends this first year.
Okay, so that program's coming in no matter what? And this would just be a little bow on top of it?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. All right, moving on then to contracts. We only have Y and A. Does anyone have a question on A? All right, then moving on then to regular agenda items, 10, A or B? C or D? Yes, Mr. Triplett?
Do we know where those funds are coming from to cover the health insurance premiums, which I think's great and wonderful, but?
Ms. McGorn?
Madam Chair, Mr. Triplett, it's about $2.24 million, and we think that they'll come from savings in other areas.
And then last, item E. And Dr. Adams, can you, because I know when I first saw this item in the urgentist meeting, I was like, whoa, what is this? So can you just kind of explain that and kind of clarify that since it affects Harden Valley and Farragut? Just kind of explain what's going on there. We are not rezoning Harden Valley and Farragut, so.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Yeah, don't worry.
This is not one of my community meetings in the town of Farragut or Harden Valley. So basically, we had an established neighborhood that was, it was technically zoned for Harden Valley and is one of those neighborhoods that it was, it was not a new development, right? So you had four families that are currently living in that neighborhood, and they decided to build on the backside of that neighborhood, which is, it's, it's in the scope of the town of Farragut. So we're, we're just rezoning those new homes that were built on that side, so it's, it's all encompassing in the town of Farragut. The families did have a choice whether they wanted to continue to attend Harden Valley Elementary School or Harden Valley Middle School or, or the town of Farragut, and I believe three out of four of the families decided to stay, and one of the families were undecided.
Yep. I appreciate that clarification, just so, and I know Lauren, I don't know if you saw that on there, and, you know, you're like, what is this? And it's being proactive, which I appreciate. Dr. Adams, thank you for that. All right, well, then moving on to public forum. I don't think we have anybody-
There is nobody for public forum today, so.
Moving on then to board forum. Sophia, do you have anything?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dual enrollment started this week, and I am part of Tusculum University's dual enrollment. We have run into an issue. On every single dual enrollment syllabus, there is a online student information with a minimum technology requirement that says access to fully functioning, up-to-date laptops or desktop computers, i.e. not a Chromebook. I was just wondering if you all were aware of this, because Halls was not when they asked, and we're kind of locked in now, because if you pull out of a college class now, you get an automatic F on your college transcript. So we are locked in for that, and how this might impact further partnering with Tusculum for dual enrollment.
I'm not, Dr. Wright, I'm not really sure.
I say, Sophia, thanks for the question. This is news to us as well.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
So I'm looking at Ms. Jackson's face, and she has the same look, like, I, I would say this, it's probably, it's probably something we can resolve. I would, I would ask Mr. Long and his team to reach out maybe to Ms. Jackson and Ms. Seals, and they could probably take care of that, so we'll see what's going on with it. All right, good deal, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing that up. Reverend Butler?
Yeah, it is a good question.
Ms. Templeton? Ms. Fontenot-Ridley?
I don't have a question this time. I would just want to say, say thank you for the welcome that you all have provided us, the new people on the school board. It's been, it's been a somewhat easy transition from classroom to nothing to actually doing something, so I really appreciate the kindness.
Mr. Triplett?
Yeah, welcome to our new board members, and the board member that's already been a board member but now returning again as a new board member, but we're excited to have you. A little bit of an unusual meeting with all of the policy discussion. Normally, that's all done, and this meeting is a little shorter, so all of them won't be quite like this, but, but good questions, good discussions, so welcome.
Ms. Pike?
Thank you. I also want to welcome our new board members. It's really interesting to not be the new board member and a little different and uncomfortable kind of, so I'm supposed to know things now. So welcome, and to our new student representative, welcome. I'm really enjoying and looking forward to working with you all. And then I also just wanted to wish everyone a happy Labor Day that was yesterday, and say that I come from a long line of laborers in my family and really appreciate all the things that have happened from the 1800s and what laborers have done for the United States. And I also appreciate that there is a union for our teachers to join and be supported through. Thank you.
Ms. Morgan?
I did it. I just wanted to say that I am excited to be here, and thank you to everybody for the warm welcomes. It was great at swearing in today to sit alongside these other people and see you all there, and I was super impressed with Sophia. She was cool as a cucumber back there in the back row with us, and I, we were sweating it out. I don't want to call Travis out, but he was sitting next to me, and we were sweating it out back there. So glad to work with all of you, thank you.
Mr. Wright? Ms. Christie? I just want to welcome our new board members again. Sophia, did you get excused this morning? Did someone write you an excuse for school for the swearing in this morning?
We're also not aware of that. So if you have the Halls administration reach out to-
Did someone write Mr. Long an excuse too? Because I believe that he was, he was there to support Sophia, I believe.
Well, welcome to our new board members. I think tonight was a great meeting. Thank you for the questions. I think that's how you learn, you know, you're, you jump into this, and it's like, here's this agenda, I don't know what's going on. So you guys had great questions, so thank you for that, and thank you for voting me in chair again. I look forward to the next year, and with that, we are adjourned.